Greetings. In the name of the State of Maine, we are required to notify and inform the voters of the Town of Woolwich and said county, qualified by the law and vote in town affairs, to meet in the Woolwich Central School at 137 Nacquahsette Road in said town on the 27th day of April, AD to 2022, at 6:00 in the evening. Then, in there, to act on Article 1 through 45, all of said articles being set out to where? To elect Article 1, to elect a moderator to preside to said meeting and to vote by written ballot.
I would nominate that, hold the moderator.
Second that nomination. Will you nominate with a case? Second that motion?
Aye.
No? Will you turn the sound up a little bit? Can you hear me? Hello? So, loud or be close?
I speak your name.
I, Theodore K. Vogt.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So long as I shall continue a citizenship, a citizen of thereof.
As long as I shall continue a citizen thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do swear or.
You do swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent on me.
The duties incumbent on me.
As a moderator of this meeting.
As a moderator of this meeting.
According to the Constitution and the law.
According to the Constitution and the law.
Of the state, so help me God.
John Chapman couldn't be here tonight, and so I'm a temporary substitute. Last night, I met with David Kane and Jason Shaw, and they brought me up to speed on what I should know, and I'm ready to go. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and all speakers with our microphone around our two microphone here to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John often begins the meeting with reciting some rules and principles that govern our meeting. Those are listed on page five of the Town Report, and most of them serve like. Is this better?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. John Chapman often starts the meetings with a list of rules and principles that should govern our meeting, and those are set forth, for the most part, on page five of the Town Report, and probably all of us are familiar with those, so I'll dispense with that. We'll begin with any announcements. I think there are few to be given. Debbie Locke has a few. When you wish to speed, we have a stationary microphone here. Please come forward, and we also have a mic that Paula Peaton will give to people as well.
The same announcements as most years, I'm glad to say. There apparently will be a letter carriers food drive on Saturday, the 14th of May, of non-perishable food items for that going to the Bath Food Bank. Watch for an announcement in your mailbox, and check the items you give, please, to make sure that none are expired, because it costs the food bank when they have to toss those things. There also will be an annual Town Memorial Day service on Monday, the 30th of May, at 7:00 PM at the Daisbury Congregational Church. And Woolwich Historical Society Museum will be open Sundays from 12 to 4, June, July, and August, and we'll be sending out some information next month. And if you need a history book or anything else from the Historical Society, there's a table over there to meet your needs. Thank you.
Jennifer Rich Smith also has an announcement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer, and I'm the R21 School Board Representative, and I was just asked permission to stand tonight to ask if there's anyone who would be available to come to the School Board meeting, which is Monday, May 2nd, at 6:00 PM at Morse, Monday, May 2nd, at 6:00 PM. The Board has before the decision for our budget either to use federal funds that we already have or to raise the local appropriation that we need to have from the individual towns. It's an important decision. I've been advocating to use our federal funds that we already have before adding to the tax burden of our residents, but the Board is made up of a lot of different people and a lot of different opinions, and if you would like to see us use those federal funds first to keep our property taxed as well, I would urge you either to come to the meeting or send some documentation to the School Board knowing, to letting them know how the residents of Woolwich feel. Thank you.
Any other announcements?
So, I'll be here with Alan Green tonight, and we're going to be presenting the Spirit of America Award. Typically, Allison's here, but she's not doing so well, so she's not able to attend the meeting. This year's Spirit of America Award is voted by the Select Board, goes to the Friends of Nacquahsette Cemetery, and Alan has a list here, and they'll read of the members.
Okay, okay, so the members include Bob Turtcock, Lloyd Keith, Yarrow Clark, Sandy Clark, Jen Donahue, Bill Donahue, Carol Davis Pross, Debbie Locke, Paul Berry, Nancy Michael, David Kane, and Jack Charonson.
So, at this time, if, I know Bob's here, Bob, and any of the folks want to come up to the front here, we'll present you with the this year's award certificate.
Come on in.
All right, line right up, because you get your picture. I don't know, we'll start out here. So, the Woolwich Spirit of America 2022 is going to be presented to the Friends of Nacquahsette Cemetery, April 27th, 2022. It starts out, whereas the Nacquahsette Cemetery is the town's oldest burial ground, is a town treasurer, and.
Whereas the Friends of the Nacquahsette Cemetery saw a need and simply went to work on said treasure, and.
Whereas the Friends spent weeks repairing, cleaning, and resetting our oldest gravestones, and.
Whereas the group also cleared debris and overgrowth, and also performed general sprucing up with landscaping, and continued to do so, and.
Whereas they also painted the fence and arranged for the installation of a new sign, therefore.
Be resolved that the Town of Woolwich confers the 2022 Spirit of America Award on the Friends of Nacquahsette Cemetery on this day, the 27th of April, 2022.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody else that participated. Thank you. If there are no other announcements, we'll now start with Article 2 and continue through
the list. Articles 2, 3, and 4 are related to one another, so I think we'll take those up as one. Article 2, to see if the town will set the dates of October 28, 2022, and April 28, 2023, when taxes are due and payable, and to see if the town will fix the interest rate on unpaid taxes at 4% per annum pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 505.4, and to set the dates that interest starts on unpaid taxes 30 days after each due date. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to set an interest rate to be paid by the town on taxes that have been paid but are either abated or overpaid and refunded at 2% for the 2022-2023 tax year, 36 MRSA Section 506A. Article 4, to see if the town will vote to transfer all unexpended balances and overdrafts to the undesignated fund balance, except those that may be carried forward at the Select Board's discretion. The Select Board is authorized to expend funds out of these carry-forward accounts for the purpose for which they were established or to allow them to lapse.
I move the article 2, 3, and 4 to accept as a red. Second the motion?
Been moved and seconded that we accept these three articles. Any discussion? Very none will vote as if it were one article. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The Articles 2, 3, and 4 pass. Article 5, to see what sum the town will vote to appropriate from the undesignated fund balance account to reduce the tax commitment, the Board of Selectmen recommends up to $1,400,000.
Do you want a motion on that?
Yes.
I, I move the article. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend that article to allow us to take up to 1.5 million. Our budget is.
Before you describe that, is there a second?
Second. I'd like to amend the article to up to 1.5 million, because our budget is, it said that we think we're going to exceed 1.4. We don't think we'll get to 1.5, but if we bump it up to 1.5 and come up to 1.46 or something, then we'll already have permission to do it.
Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed, say nay. The amendment passes. We're now back to the article as amended. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of the article as amended to read up to 1,500,000, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The amended article passes. Article 5B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector or treasurer to accept prepayments of taxes not yet committed pursuant to 36 MRSA Section 506.
Move the article as read. Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The Article 5B passes. Article 5C, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $20,000 from the undesignated fund balance account to pay for abatements and applicable interest granted during this fiscal year.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second the motion?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes?
Just wondering if we could have clarification where the funds, if the undesignated fund are from?
Yes, she wants to.
Yeah, so, so those funds are, we're not raising and appropriating any money here. The funds are in the fund balance, which is, just think of it as the big checking account, if you will. So, in the event that we have to grant an abatement or give back, it just comes directly out of those, that account.
In my 29 years, we've never done it.
Did that answer your question?
No, I think the question is, where does the money come from, or how's it build up in that account?
The money comes out of the undesignated balance, which is what we just, we're going to take, if it's available at the end of the year, we're going to take 1.5 million of that to offset taxes. So, we usually have well over $100,000 in that fund, and we use it to offset the next year's taxes. So, if we need it, we could take up to $20,000 out of that fund to pay for abatements. But we do have money to pay for abatements. We've never had to dip into this.
I'm ready.
Hope, excuse me, if you have any questions or comments, if you could either raise your hand or stand, and wait till the microphone gets to you. Mr. Visson, you got microphone? Here we go.
Just don't quite understand where that money originally comes from. I understand what it's used for, but where does the balance build up from?
Comes from tax, cash flows, it comes from excise tax, it comes from any income that the town has.
Right, so you have to, real quickly, the fund balance, just think of it as one big
checking account. That's what all the money goes into. So, when you register something, and you pay for something, and you pay your taxes, you know, it goes in there. So, there's always money in there, and there's money left over in there, as advised by the town auditor. So, this is just standard language to take out of there if we need to.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of Article 5C, please say aye, yea.
Aye.
Aye. Did people say that? Any of those opposed, say nay. The Article 5C passes. 5D, to grant the Select Board the permission to remove up to $50,000 from the undesignated fund balance in the event of a state or federal declared emergency and/or disaster.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second the motion?
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 5D, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Article 5D passes. We're going to vote on, or discuss and vote on Articles 6 and 7 together. Article 6, to see, ma'am, can you hear me all right if I'm not standing right by the microphone? Okay, I'll try to do better. Just raise your hand if you can, if I'm not clear enough. Article 6, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for available grants, to receive said grants, and to expend to grant funds for the purposes stated in the grant, and to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $40,000 from the undesignated fund balance account as the town's share of any approved grants. Article 7, A, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to sell or dispose of various items that serve little or no purpose in the operation of the town. B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to accept donations, fines, and fees, and to authorize them to use the donations, fines, and fees as they see fit or as a donor directs with regards to donations.
Move the article 6 and 7. Second the motion?
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Martin Frolong, Article 7A, what hundreds various items you're talking about, how would be notified, what they are, where we can go possibly purchase them?
If it's anything of any value, we almost would have did. Most of the time, it's, it's a, gives us permission to clean up the basement. We can throw away the broken computers and that sort of thing. They are town property, and we need, we need the town's permission to get rid of them.
Can I show there's no skeletons down in the basement?
Actually, there is a skeleton in the basement. It's plastic.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Articles 6 and 7, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Incidentally, whenever we bundle articles together, if anyone wants to vote separately on the ones we bundle, just say, and we'll do that. It's not necessary that we vote on them as a group. Article 8, to select a fish commissioner for five, a five-year term, Bruce McKelman, Mr. Potter here?
Yes.
Did you want to act on this motion?
I don't have much to say, Alan, but Bruce has done a good job for us over the years, and he's great to another five-year term.
Okay, and would you move if we accept the article?
I would, I would. We accept the article as read.
Second.
Any discussion other than what Mr. Potter mentioned? All those in favor of Article 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 9, A, to see what action the town will take in regard to the ailwive privileges at Nacquahsette and Back River Creek for the coming year.
I make the mo, I make the motion that we leave that up to the fish commissioners.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that as far as the ailwive privileges are concerned, that we leave that up to the fish commissioners and take no further action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 9A passes. 9B, to see if the town will authorize the fish commissioners on behalf of the town to use funds from the yearly sale of the ailwive privileges collected on the fishway account for maintenance purposes of the fishway buildings and property. The fishway commissioners are responsible for maintenance decisions. As the fishway property is shared with the Bathwater District, the fishway commissioners will coordinate with them on matters related to the OI privilege. When expenditures is expected to be greater than $1,000, a planned fishway maintenance project will be presented to the Select Board for their agreement. Use of fishway funds for purposes other than the fishway purposes shall be subject to a vote of the town.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 9B. Discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 9B passes. Article 9C, to see if the town will authorize the Selectmen to use fishway funds for repairs to historic town-owned properties. The amount of money transferred for this purpose will be mutually agreed to by the Selectmen and the fish commission. This will, this decision will be made after completion of the 2022 ailwive harvest.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second the motion?
Moved and seconded to accept Article 9C. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 9C passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate required by the town for non-payment of taxes on such terms as they deem advisable, and to authorize them or the treasurer to execute quick claim deeds and transfer tax documents on same, and to also authorize the Selectmen to use the funds from the sale of said real estate for any mutual, mute, municipal purposes as they deem appropriate. And then there's a note, the municipal officers shall use the special sale proceeds required by 36 MRSA Section 943-C for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owners.
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 10. Questions or discussion? All those in favor of Article 10, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $689,418.94, established for the Town of Woolwich by state law, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the following articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit. There's a note there that reads, "This article is needed because the LD1 tax reform legislation does not take into account the town's use of surplus to reduce taxes when processing the commitment of taxes, and the appropriations approved during this town meeting will exceed the tax levy cap."
Move the article to be accepted as read. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 11. Any questions or discussion? This particular article, we have to do by written ballot, which I think you all got as you came in through the doorway. So, if you could indicate on your ballot how you vote, yes or no, and then pass it on to the end of the line. If you want to fold your ballot, you're welcome to do that. It's not necessary, but you can. And we'll then, after the court has the ballot, we'll proceed with the other articles and the further announcements.
While we're voting on this, I should have attention as I do every year. The aggravation thing about this particular article is that it's a thing. It's an article that has to be legislated. When the article is passed by the legislature, we have to report the state planning office, which we still require to. The problem is, there's no longer a state planning office. So, we go all through all this, we have to do it by written ballot, and we can nothing with the results. the results.
And it's the only article that we have to submit a written ballot court as well. That's specifically in the state law. Excuse me, Opal. We're going to continue with the article, but when you finish your count, would you let us know?
Of course, yes.
Article twelve A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds for the reevaluation of property assessments, the select board recommends one hundred thousand dollars. Note, the town has not had a reevaluation in fifteen years, which normally should be done every seven to ten years.
Move the article we accept it as read. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article twelve A. Discussion or questions?
Good evening. My name is Rick Tetrick. I went through this fifteen years ago, was not fun. But what I want to say first, the selectmen, thank you for this year for keeping the taxes at the level they are. But what I want to say right now is that what is going on in our country with the with the recession that is almost going to happen, there is so much uncertainty and to have the uncertainty of this done and the possibility, because of the way real estate prices are going in our our neighborhoods here, houses go up for sale, it never really go up for sale, and it's cash money and they're paying three to four times. And if they reevaluate, they look at these houses, look at the prices of this stuff, we as the citizens are going to be taking a huge hit and we can't take hits like that right now. We can't, our our taxes, our our funds, our our oil prices have tripled, our electric prices have tripled, and if we do something like this, and actually, all I really want to say is, no, we shouldn't do this at this time. We should have done it seven to at seven to ten-year point.
So when you say we shouldn't do this, you're talking about a reevaluation?
Exactly. No, not at this point.
Anything further that you want to say?
No, you, I just don't think it's the right thing to do at this time.
Mr. King would like to respond to that, but before he does so, is there anyone else who would like to comment or ask a question?
Martin Frolong again, and I agree with the gentleman wholeheartedly with the price of fuel, the price of heating oil, kerosene, food, and everything else going double or triple what it was a year and a half ago. People on set incomes will not be able to afford to live in this town anymore and where are they to go? Where are they to go? A lot of these people in this town are elderly and a lot, a lot of them are living on a set income that hasn't increased maybe a half a percent, but it hasn't increased to the point where they can keep up with the ridiculously high prices that they're going through now to buy food, fuel, and every other thing. They'll be they'll be out of the league and there'll be no places for them to go unless they can find a good carport launch and a new county bridge.
And you're suggesting we should not do a reevaluation?
Absolutely not. Okay. Please do we encourage?
We have one other comment here.
My name is Peter North. I support reevaluation because it normally theoretically does not increase the taxes overall in the in the town, it just redistributes the taxes. And actually, those sales that occurred more often than not in many revaluations are more affected than those that have been living here longer.
That gentleman is one hundred percent correct. What we're voting on tonight is the total amount of money that we have to raise. And what happens is if the town's valuation goes up, the mill rate comes down. If it if a rebound is done correctly, one-third of the people will see no change in their taxes at all. Once one-third of the people will will see the taxes go down and one-third will see an increase. The flip side of that is, right now, we get a state subsidy for our school department. If any of you are veterans, you get a veteran assessment off your taxes. If you've got open space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We are reporting this year at eighty-five percent. If we drop any lower, we're going to start losing every every cent, we're going to lose fifty percent of our reimbursements from the state now, and it's going to get worse and worse and worse. And if we use too much of our state subsidy for the school, you're really going to see the taxes go up. We have, this is something that we have to do by law. The reason we could stretch it past the ten years is that house sales, if we had a house assessed for a hundred thousand dollars, it usually sold between ninety-five to a hundred and five thousand. We have a house right now on the Middle Road that we have assessed for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, it's on the market for nine or a thousand. And what that is doing, those those sales are driving our ratio way off. So if we don't do a rebound, it's going to cost you more money than it will if we do a rebound. So it it nobody nobody likes to rebound, they're they're paying for the town staff, they're paying for our selectmen, but we have to stay current or the state state will start punishing us by taking away our subsidies and our reimbursements. For veterans, farm, open space, any any anything you can get, even your even your homestead. You know, we get a hundred percent of your homestead that this year because we cannot any longer claim a hundred percent. They allow us us, they allow us, as long as we're at ninety percent of that, they allow us to claim a hundred percent. And because of the staff, the work of our town staff and our town assessor, we've been able to stay that close for years, well past our heading of limits, and we've done very well at it, but it's caught up with us now.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on, the microphone's coming. Could you stand, please? Thank you.
Question, with the assessment, would you guys be contorting your your property tax arm visiting with that cost or if that just specifically depends on somebody else taking each property process?
Well, to be to be honest with you, we haven't got that plan yet. It seems Articles pass will give the board the authority to go and get RFPs. This still may be a year or two years away. We haven't talked to any firms, we haven't written any proposal or talked about anything. We wanted to make sure that we had most of the funding in place and the town folks were asking to go forward.
So the figure that you guys came up with, is that just like a standard amount that you estimate needing based on other towns recently?
Yeah, yes, that is correct, and we also talked to the town assessing agent and we came up with a pretty good, you know, got a feeling, yes, we all have a problem. And as you know, we appropriated a hundred thousand last year at this meeting. So we already have a hundred thousand, we're asking to raise and appropriate another hundred thousand. And if you keep reading down, you'll see that we're asking to take a hundred thousand from federal ARPA money.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
From Rick Tetrick again, last time this happened, that's why I say this was very painful. What happened was that the board, after it was all approved, rezoned and some of us would have got into a zone that jacked our taxes up five times. And, you know, what I don't understand is that that we were able to get a change, but there were people's taxes that went down and quite a few of those were the selectmen, that their taxes went down. And I I and it was, so we did get a little bit of relief from that, they changed our zoning again, but still, I I'm not, I don't have a real good sense of fairness in all of this, from what I went through last time. And and the other thing I would like to say is, and the gentleman back there with his comments about people on fixed income, I said I recommended, and it'd be different from this, but I think the town ought to take a vote once people are sixty-two years old, that their taxes are frozen in time until they die or the property is sold.
That's beyond the scope of this article.
I understand, I understand, but I think people need to think about that.
Okay.
So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? They will vote then on Article twelve A. I'll repeat it again, since it's been a while, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate funds for reevaluation of property assessments, the select board recommends one hundred thousand dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Article twelve A passes. Article twelve B, to see if the town will authorize the select board to use one hundred thousand dollars of A R P A, which stands for American Rescue Plan Act, funds to put towards a reevaluation.
Move the article we accept it as read. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am.
What is the?
Excuse me, could you either stand to the microphone or?
Okay.
Olive, that microphone is on, Olive?
Yes. I'd just like to ask what that source is, if you can explain it to us.
What is the source of the American Rescue Plan Act?
That's the that's the money that the federal government sent out, all the states and to the towns. There's no question what is taxed all this, it's coming out of your left pocket, state your right pocket, but it isn't going to come out of your out of your property tax.
And that sum of money this town now has?
We got a total, I think, of three hundred and eighty-seven.
Three hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
What was the intention of that, though, when it was given to us? What was the intentional use of that money?
The federal government sent it out and they they originally, they they asked everybody to spend it on water systems, storage systems, and internet, which kind of shows you how disconnected Washington D.C. is from rural NAR. We don't have a townwide water system other than if you live along George Wright Road or wherever the Badwater District goes. We do not have a town storage system at all, and we already have internet in the town. So over the over the over the course of it, they have agreed to allow small towns like us to use it for other purposes, and we found out that we could use it towards the rebound. So we've got to raise the money to do a rebound anyways, so we might as well use some of it towards that.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article twelve B, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article twelve B passes. Twelve C, to authorize the select board to issue a request for proposal and enter into an agreement with a reevaluation firm.
Move the article we accept it as read. Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion or questions?
I wonder if the, Jonathan Apple, yours, I wonder if the RFP can include some sort of public discussion of the assessment process so that the hard feelings that are still living in our town don't get further. Seems to me there are always going to be discussions and differences of evaluations and zoning areas, but those things could be made public to us all so that we could do that as fairly possible. And I hope the RFP could include that part.
The last time we did a rebound, the companies that did it spent weeks at the fire station meeting, anybody didn't want to meet with them and explain the system, how they how they arrived, the figures that they did and everything else. I'm sure that we wouldn't contract with anybody that wouldn't do this.
Thank you, David, and I'm sure individuals had an opportunity to speak their mind, but I think it might be helpful if the town had a gathering, had a town meeting where those who felt that that individual individually, they weren't heard, or a group of people in the neighborhood weren't heard. I I just don't like to think that fifteen years ago something happened that still hasn't been resolved.
Are you are you suggesting that perhaps there should be a meeting before the reevaluation is done by the people who have been hired?
Well, certainly before information's sent out, but but it's more when the proposal comes out that people would have a chance to raise their concerns individually with group, but then we as a town body could hear those people who felt that they were not being fairly treated or people who thought that they were underevaluated.
Mr. King, if once your reevaluation is done, is it a done deal or is it still open for public discussion?
Really not sure how to answer that. It is pretty much a done deal, but we would certainly listen to anybody's input ever as we did the last time around. Anybody that was not satisfied after meeting with the rebound company, we always have a meeting with them and the sector, so and we we'd more than willing to do that. I mean, we would meet, if somebody could somehow point out an error on the part of the company, the final decision is up to the five of us. So we we would certainly listen to whatever anybody had to say.
Yes, sir.
I just had to do one more.
Mr. Apple, you aren't in you, sir.
I'm sorry, but I know when the individual could speak to the select board. I guess what I'm saying is, could there be an opportunity for the town to look at that together? Did a fully a third receive a decrease in taxes? And were a third actually kept the same? And who were the third who, that, if we could look at that together, and I think that would build our ability to work together as a town versus just being put on me individually grunting about my situation.
Right.
If everybody, if the people in the town would want to have a public meeting, we certainly would have a public meeting. The process is is pretty much the same in every town that does a rebound, and we would certainly have somebody that's qualified and if if people felt we needed to have a public meeting, I would not oppose that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Tom Summer. To answer one question, after the fact, it will be a done deal, at least based on my experience, and I'm no expert at this, but what I found in Pennsylvania where I came from, where I had an increase in my taxes of three hundred percent, and I was given the opportunity to appeal, but that was an uphill battle. So I would probably urge you to go along with Jonathan's suggestion and with the RFP, include something of a statement for meeting with the town, and hopefully we get more than fifteen percent of the town come out, that that sort of thing. Because it would be imperative that the majority drive the bus that what's considered to be an equitable sort of thing, those that get an increase of three hundred percent or more are probably not going to be very happy, and particularly if they're on fixed income. So it would be in the benefit of the town to have a town meeting with as part of the
Yes, we have a lot of people who are, we have a lot of people who feel like they're left out all the time. left out all the time, and it doesn't matter whether the rest of us feel that they aren't left out, they still feel left out. I think it's a really great idea to start at the beginning and say, we're going to do this as a community. And I think you have experience with running a group, sort of along those lines, and you've, you've had public meetings at the beginning. So, I think you, you, both you have a good reason to say it, and you can pitch in and say how to do it, too.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
For the gentleman who wants to have a meeting before the reevaluation, to bring in all the underevalu, underevaluated people, felt they were underevaluated, I mean, I'm sure they couldn't pay more taxes, like going to the town selectman, if they felt they were underevaluated, so they'd get a, they'd consciously, but it's like, it's like taxes for the federal government, what could give the IRS more if they feel you're underpaid, but you don't see too many people doing that. Also, I'd like to know this reevaluation firm, is it going to be a reevaluation, reevaluation firm from Maine, or are you going to go out of state and bring them in with their interstate values, their interstate ideas, property taxes, and what they should charge for this and that on a person's property, or whatever?
I would hope that we find a Maine company, but I can't guarantee that. Is the type of rules available, and how much they're going to charge us to do it? I don't know if it's relevant or not, but the last rebuild, we had two people that I remember were most upset, was one fellow came in, he was really upset because his valuation had gone up considerably, but his taxes went down, it was six hundred dollars, but he was still upset because he wanted, he wanted to keep the six hundred dollar reduction, but he also wanted his, his valuation reduced, and we thought that just wouldn't happen. The other, the other fellow that I remember that was really upset, he owned twelve acres of a house on the Kennedy Road, and he said, we, we were just crazy. His house was not worth, anybody knew what, what we were going to say it was worth. I think we had it assessed, after the rebuild, I think we had it assessed for six hundred and some thousand dollars. He kept nine of the twelve acres, sold his house to one point four million. So, I mean, you, you know, it's, it's basically math, it's, if you've got ten houses on a street, and they're all identical, and three of them sell for a hundred thousand dollars, just to use a number, chances are, all ten houses are worth a hundred thousand dollars. Now, somebody might want to say, well, my house is only worth sixty thousand, because I've got it painted green, and my neighbor's house is blue, or whatever, but it, it's just simple math, and the explanation. What we are spending, we cannot spend any money that you people don't give us to spend, and that's what you're doing here tonight, you're telling us what we can spend, and this is the amount of money that we have to raise. And like the gentleman said earlier, all revaluation does is, is spread that out for more fairly. You take anybody that's built a fairly new house, you know exactly what that house is worth when they get it done, so they're paying probably more taxes than somebody that's maybe lived in a house for twenty-five years, and done a lot of, a lot of upgrades to it and everything, and we just haven't picked that up. So, if, if Ellis is out, it makes it fair, okay? That's all it does, it spreads it out on a more fair and even basis.
What's before us, Mr. York?
I think you're misunderstanding, I, I, what I took away from what Mr. Appleby said is, we really should have the opportunity to look at, at the requirements that are being contracted up, so that we have a good process, that the people agree that we've hired a company and given them good guidance, that's the time to look at it. Once the contract is let, if it's let, if it's a good contract, and it's well executed, then we should trust the process. It's, it's looking at the process to develop the specifications, which are probably a ninety percent rollover, you do it, you know, it's a standard, and just make sure that when you get ready to let the contract, that there's an opportunity for people to have input, and, and it's not what the outcome is, it's that the process is fair and transparent. Another reason to have a good evaluation of it's your insurance. If you have a house that's under assessed, and it burns down, and you're contract, and you've got a problem, because you don't have a good basis for the replacement of it, so assessed value is important, and it's a way of figuring a fair share of the budget that we all agree on tonight. So, I, I think it's just, be transparent in terms and conditions of the contract, who's going to do it, what we're asking them to do, how they're going to do it, let people read it, then that's the time before you let the contract, not after the contract. After the contract, then you can appeal, but that's, that's all I think is really we're trying to suggest.
I can guarantee you that we would be as transparent as possible. If, if we had full-time staff with six people in our assessing department, we didn't have to hire an outside company to do it, we'd have, we'd have, if we had six or eight people in our, on our assessing department, day to day, we could do it in-house, but we don't have the expertise, and we don't have the staff to do it, so we'd have to hire a company. But we will, I guarantee you, we'll try to be as transparent as possible.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Tom Summer, again, I would like to propose an amendment to twelve C, that it include, as Jonathan suggested, a town meeting along with the RFP.
A what meeting?
A, a town meeting that would be part of the RFP proposal.
Before we get into discussing it, it's been moved that we have a, a town meeting as part of the RFP, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
While there's discussion on your motion, I'd like you to write it out, so we have it exactly the way you want it, and we'll show it to you. Could you write it out?
Okay, I, I think, to a certain extent, people are, are missing what this article is asking for. We're asking permission, permission to issue an RFP, a request for proposals, okay? So, we won't know, if we have a meeting before we do that, what will we discuss? We won't know what the proposals, we won't know what anybody has proposed until we ask them to propose. If we went out to bid, we would have, we would have to write one hundred percent of the article when we were putting out the bid, and if we messed up, left a column out or something, we'd be in trouble. But if we ask for a request for proposals, if, let's say, three companies come to us, and they tell us what they'll do, then we could have a meeting at that time, and we could let everybody see what the three proposals were, and we could discuss it then. But to have a meeting before we go out for a request for a proposal, what are we going to discuss?
Excuse me, before you ask your question or make your comments, sir, who made the amendment, perhaps what you're suggesting is that the request for a proposal should contain in it the willingness of the applicant to conduct a town meeting?
Right.
Or to participate in a town meeting, not conduct? Is that correct?
That's right.
Is that what you...
That's what I understood, I was saying.
Okay, if your amendment could address it that way, and hold on, I'd like to...
I think Mr. King is in the, in that section, he's saying, to authorize the select board to issue an RFP, and enter into an agreement with a reevaluation firm. So, you're putting out a bid, and all at once, stating that you're going to enter in an agreement, so maybe it's, put out the RFP, and then separately, after a town meeting, review those RFPs to enter, would that be...
That would take a special town meeting, then.
Okay.
Are you, you want to comment on that?
Well, I just, I was a little confused, we're throwing out the term "town meeting", which is what we're doing tonight, so are we talking about an informational meeting, a public meeting, where folks can talk and discuss? You know, David is right, what we were looking to do is have, whatever firms interested, solicit to us their proposals, and then obviously the select board would review them, it's public, if you can count, if you have a meeting to review those proposals, we could, we could have a, set up a public informational meeting to do that, right?
Yes.
And, and I'm all for that, too, I think that, this is a town, this is a big decision, it's a town decision. I'm, I'm just not sure if the "town meeting" term is the right term we should use. This is, this is a town meeting, with awards and articles, and I think, I think we can talk about it.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can it just be a committee?
Do you want the select board to form a committee?
Sounds like, sounds like there are people who are interested in pursuing this. I agree, "town meeting" doesn't seem like a term that has anything to do with this, but it sounds like there are people who want to, are interested in this topic, can talk about this topic at another time, as part of a committee, and discuss it further, but not here at town meeting.
I'd like to just pause for a minute, we have an amendment on the floor, and what I'd like to do is, we'll consider what you've written out as, as your amendment, and have you seen it, Jonathan?
I just did.
And you second it?
Yes.
So, at least this will be what we're going to vote on, okay?
I do just want to make a comment, the longer we delay this process, the more money it's going to cost the town in lost revenue from the state of Maine on all our subsidies and all our reimbursement. So, we can delay this as long as you want, our ratio is going to continue to go down, and we're going to continue to lose the money that we receive from the state on all our reimbursement.
So, what the article is that's before us, is to authorize the select board to issue an RFP and enter into an agreement with a reevaluation firm. The amendment that's been proposed, and second it is, to amend that article to include a public meeting as part of the RFP request. Now, now you're saying a public meeting that the select board holds, or that the firm agrees to?
It would be a firm, yes.
Okay.
I don't think anybody wants to slow down this process, that's not the intention of this.
You're talking about this process being this meeting?
No.
No, I was speaking to the speaker. That was a joke.
So, this is, this is, if anything, to speed up the process, so that the select board, as it requests an RFP, can just indicate to those firms that are interested in presenting an RFP, that we're, that we're interested in a process that would include a town meeting, a public meeting.
A public meeting for the town.
Thank you for clarifying, for clarifying that, that a public meeting as part of the process, in a way that makes sense to the select board and the company, and gives us a chance to talk about it.
Okay, thanks. Kenny, you have anything to add?
We don't oppose that.
We don't oppose.
You don't oppose the amendment?
We will try to be, we will try to be as transparent as possible. I have a sign that hangs over my desk, it says, "To raise more taxes than is absolutely necessary is legalized robbery," and I believe in that.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
And we're voting now just on the amendment, okay? And the amendment is to add a public meeting as part of the RFP request. In other words, people who are submitting proposals would be participating in public meetings. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay, and now we're back to the original, did it pass? What, oh, excuse me, it didn't pass. So, Article twelve C now reads, "To authorize the select board to issue an RFP and enter into an agreement with a reevaluation firm, and the RFP will include a public meeting as part of the..." And a public meeting will be included as part of the RFP request. Anything else? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. It passes as an amendment. And now we're up to Article thirteen, these are the, beginning with the town officers, and let's do Articles thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen together. Article thirteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for the compensation of the town clerk, deputy treasurer, deputy tax collector, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars." Article fourteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-four thousand dollars for the compensation of the town administrator, town treasurer, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to sixty-four thousand dollars." Article fifteen, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars for the compensation of the tax collector, deputy town clerk, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars."
Move the articles to be accepted, Brett.
Second. Been moved and seconded to accept Articles thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Is there any discussion or questions, comments? Yes, sir.
With the differentiation of one word, Articles thirteen and fifteen are exactly the same.
They are two different positions. We, we have three positions, one for each of the articles, an Article thirteen position and Article fifteen position are different people. Is, is that not clear?
The primary duties of the person in Article thirteen is the town clerk, she is the deputy treasurer and deputy tax collector. The person in channel in Article fifteen is the tax clerk, but she's also the deputy town clerk, and that way, everybody down the town hall, where everybody else is half when somebody's out. We only have a three-person office, so if one person's out, sick leave, or vacation, or whatever, somebody else can take over their duties while they're out.
So, you have deputy town clerk, town clerk, deputy tax collector, tax collector, so all these deputies are the subordinates, and they all get the same type of raise?
No, there's only three people, okay? Article thirteen is a, for a town clerk, but if Article fifteen, the tax collector's out of the picture for two weeks, then the town clerk can also act as a tax collector while the tax collector is not in the office. There's only two people. Everybody, everybody is a deputy to everybody else, so that if one person is out, somebody else can cover their shift while they're not there.
I'm doing the new math, I haven't heard the new English.
Take, take the decision.
These people did three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars in Article thirteen, three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars in Article fifteen, do you dispute that?
Article fifteen is for forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars to pay one person. Article thirteen is for forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars to pay a number of persons. They do act as each other's deputies. It's like, one person changes tires, the other person pumps gas, and the guy that pumps gas is out, the guy that changes tires goes out and pumps gas.
Think of it as this way...
He's crossing the figure line, he's doing a different job.
So, Article thirteen...
So, you're just seeing that, that there's two people, and the first person in Article thirteen is going to get three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollar raise, and one person in Article fifteen is going to get three thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollar raise? And to make it easier, you just put three new titles in each one of them, okay, I'm just seeing now.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? We vote on all three at once? Any objection to that? Any objection to that? All those in favor of Articles 13, 14, and 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no, nay? Articles 13, 14, and 15 pass. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-eight thousand dollars for the employee health insurance account.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second? Article 16 has been moved and seconded, discussion or questions? All those in favor of Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 16 passes. Excuse me, I should've interrupted sooner. Um, going back to Article 11, the one we did a written ballot on, the ayes were fifty and the nays were fourteen, so that article passes. That's Article 11. Okay, we're on to Article 17. Article 17A, to see what sum of money the town will vote to pay the town officers for the ensuing year.
Mr. Moderator.
Glad you're here, Mr. Longley.
I don't think I'll need a microphone. I'd like to make a motion that we dispense the balance with reading of this article.
I second that.
Is there any objection to dispensing with reading? Okay, so Article 17A is before us.
Move the article that's not read.
Second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussions regarding any of those line items? Seeing no discussion, Article 17A will vote on now with a total figure of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 17A passes. Article B, to see what sum pending, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for the town officer's account for the ensuing year. Recommendation, there's a misprint in the warrant and in the town report. It should read fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Move the article as read.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 17B. Any discussion or questions? Yes?
You guys probably have a question.
Hold, hold on a minute. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. Any other? Article 17B, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? 17B passes. 17C, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars for the salary, including mileage, of the animal control officer, AOC, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to eight thousand dollars.
Move the article as read.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 17C. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 17D, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand forty dollars for the salary of the code enforcement officer, building inspector, and licensed plumbing inspector, and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to thirty thousand forty dollars.
Move the article as read.
Second motion?
Article 17A, or D, has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of Article 17D, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 17D passes. Article 17E, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for the salary of a backup CEO officer and authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to three thousand dollars.
Move the article as read.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article 17E. Discussion or questions? All those in favor of Article 17E, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 17E passes. 17F, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for temporary help and training replacement personnel, and to authorize the select people to spend any amount up to three thousand dollars.
Move the article as read.
Second?
Article 17F has been, has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those, all those in favor of Article 17F, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 17F passes. Article 18A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following town accounts.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the reading of the balance of those line items.
I'll second that.
The article has been, oh, okay, any objection to the not reading?
Alan, the article is presented.
I second that motion.
Article 18A has been moved and seconded for a total expenditure for the year 2022 of twenty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars. Any discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
Am I to assume this, the Nequahs Park Committee is the part right on by here, is that all? Okay. That's a fifteen hundred dollar jump from what it was last year. Is it possible to buy maybe three seventy-dollar garbage cans to put up there?
Excuse me, it's a, in this article, it's a reduction of fifteen hundred dollars. The first column is the current year's.
I see what works.
We're actually spending less money on this article, and we, we took the Nequahs Park Committee money and we moved it, it's, uh,
Article 33.
We combined it with Article 33, we looked at Article 33. Uh, but, uh, we're spending less money on this column. We, the proposed budget is, is divided on the right, and you'll notice that there are several zeros in there.
Okay, so now there will be never any garbage cans out there? I hear you.
Now, what Mr. King has pointed out is the Nequahs Park Committee's fifteen hundred dollars has gone down to zero, but the Nequahs Park Committee's figure appears in Article 33 as a separate article, and that's for a four thousand dollar figure. So if, if you were comparing apples to apples, you would actually add four thousand dollars to the right-hand column for a total of thirty-one thousand ninety-nine dollars, which is an increase of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, uh, of.
Uh, actually, no. If you look last year, the, the maintenance, the upkeep of the park, we budgeted seventeen hundred. So if you add the fifteen hundred, that we moved to that, uh, it comes up to thirty-seven hundred last year, and we're asking for four thousand this year. So it's a, it's an increase of three hundred dollars if you combine the two, the two articles.
Sorry for the mistake. So what's before us now, an Article twenty-eight, twenty? Sorry. 18A, are all the figures in the right-hand column totaling twenty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article? Nope. 18A, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Article 18A passes. Article 18B, to see if the town will authorize the select board to use up to twenty-five hundred dollars from American Rescue Plan Act funds for video equipment for the communications committee.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 18B has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 18B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 18B passes. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty thousand three hundred and three dollars to support the operating costs of the patenti-free library and to authorize the selectmen to spend any amount up to sixty thousand three hundred and three dollars.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 19 has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 19, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Article 19 passes. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise, excuse me. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty dol, fifteen dollars for the office operations account. The approximate breakdown of the account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense the balance with the reading of that article.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Is there any objection dispensed with the reading of the details of the article?
I think the article is presented.
I second the motion.
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 20 and to accept the figure of forty-six thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 20, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 20 passes. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the municipal building operation of plant account. The approximate breakdown of the accounts is, is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Longley.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense the balance with the reading of those line items.
Thank you. Second? Is there any objection to dispense with the reading? Seeing none? Is there a motion on Article 21 with a figure of thirty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars?
Move the article to be presented.
Second motion?
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 21. Discussion or questions? All those in favor of Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 21 passes. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand six hundred and fifty-three dollars for the town's insurance. There's a note there. Article 22 includes all municipal buildings, contents, and tax-acquired properties. Vehicle insurance is now listed under the appropriate departments.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to accept Article 22 as read. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 22 passes. Article 23, to see if the town will authorize the board of selectmen to sign a one-year contract with an assessing agent for the purpose of assessing and maintaining the equity of the property assessments. Further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-two thousand dollars as payment to the assessing agent.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 23 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? Now, this has nothing to do with the reevaluation, does it? All those in favor of Article 23, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay? Article 23 passes. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred dollars to update the property plans.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second motion?
Article 24 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of Article 24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay? Article 24 passes. Article 25, to see if the town will vote to raise, raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars for the computer replacement account.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 25 has been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion? All those in favor of Article 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 25 passes. Article 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars for payment of membership dues for the main municipal association.
Move the article.
Second?
Article 26 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Yes, sir.
What, what is the main municipal association, how does it benefit me as a taxpayer?
M and A supplies services, such as legal advice, training, sample exercises, online classes, and the others required by law. We get a lot more through return, uh, than what we pay them. If we had to go out and hire everything that they provide to us for service, we'd pay a lot more than this.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 26, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 26 passes. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand two hundred dollars to pay the auditor.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second motion?
Article 27 has been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion or questions? All those in favor of Article 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 27 passes. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars for the town's litigation account.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 28 has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 28, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article 28 passes. Article 29A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the municipal building note principal.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second?
Article 29A has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 29A, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 29A passes. 29B, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of zero dollars for the municipal building note interest. Note, interest raised and appropriated last year was higher than anticipated, so interest will be carried forward to pay this year's interest.
Move the article to be accepted as read.
Second motion?
Article 29B has been moved and seconded.
This is the last page of all this note. We, after, after this, uh, we are pretty clear. Maybe we'll have a note burning by down in town hall. This is a new edition on town hall, because we, this is the last page. This is the last page.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of Article twenty-nine B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article twenty-nine B passes. Article thirty, to raise and appropriate seven thousand dollars and put into a reserve account for the purchase of solar panels at the end of seven years from Revision Energy Green Bolt LLC with a purchase price of forty-eight thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty passes. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand one hundred dollars for the continued sampling of groundwater from the installed surface water test site at the landfill.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-one has been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-one, thank you. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-one passes. Article thirty-two A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred and forty thousand six hundred and twenty- two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents for complete weekly curbside refuse collection and to authorize the select people to enter into an agreement with Riverside Disposal and Eco Main for their services.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article thirty-two A has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Did I miss reading a line in that? I'm sorry. Should I read it now?
Make a motion to dispense with that line.
You guys are more alert than I am. Okay. We don't have any questions or discussion, does it? Article thirty-two A. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Article thirty-two A passes. Thirty-two B, to see if the town will appropriate a sum not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars from the under- undesignated fund balance account for the select board to use, if necessary, for unanticipated solid waste disposal recycling costs.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article thirty-two B has been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Those in favor of Article thirty-two B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Article thirty-two B passes. Article thirty-two C, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars for the household hazardous waste collection event. Note, each year, the city of Bath along with area towns sponsors a household hazardous waste collection day. Citizens sign up to dispose of such items as oil-based paints, fuels, solvents, insecticides, et cetera. Date of household hazardous waste collection day is May seventh, from nine a.m. to one p.m.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-two C has been moved and seconded. Any comments or discussion?
I just say one. Jonathan Appleyard, pointed information, you do need to pre-register. We've already done that for this year. The telephone number to call in Bath is on page sixty-two, and it's an easy process, and I encourage you to go ahead, register, take your stuff.
Any other comments or questions? Article thirty-two C, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Article thirty-two C passes. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four thousand dollars for the maintenance and upkeep of the Niquocet Park Outdoors. Note, the Niquocet Park Committee budget request is now included in this article.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-three has been moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Yes, sir.
For a long hearkening back to my phone box, Article sixteen A. Now, just an out house, can we get a couple trash cans out there, please? Niquocet Park. This does specifically out house.
Yeah, there's a couple.
Okay, it was the last, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, I think, I think we made an error in weaving that, just pointing out, sir, that word out house, I don't think we want that word in there. I would like to move that we amend the article to remove the word out house in the Niquocet Park.
But you're going to remove the out house?
No, no, we're not going to remove the out house, this doesn't, this doesn't mean anything else.
We just want to limit the funds to that point.
So, we're deleting a word in Article thirty-three, and that is out house, so it'll end with the maintenance and upkeep of the Niquocet Park. Have you seconded that amendment?
I did.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment or questions? Those people in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, we're back to-
I move the question as amended. I'll second that.
All right. So, we're now voting on Article thirty-three, and it, it's as written, but doesn't have the word out house. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-three passes as amended. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following accounts.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Longland.
I'd like to make a motion to dispense with the balance of the reading of those line items.
Second?
Any objection to the motion? Seeing none, we now have the article before us, with the figure for this year being seven hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-four has been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article thirty-four passes. Thirty-five A, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to remove up to sixty-two thousand, if available- sixty-two thousand dollars, if available, from the local road assistance program account for hot-topping town roads.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Articles thirty-five A has been moved and seconded. Comments or questions? All those in favor of Article thirty-five A, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article thirty-five A passes. Thirty-five B, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to spend any additional A- or, excuse me, L R A P funds for whatever highway purpose the selectmen and the road commissioner deem appropriate.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article thirty-five B has been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-five B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-five B passes. Thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for repair and maintenance on unpaved town-maintained roads.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-six has been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-six passes. Article thirty-seven A, to see if the town will raise and- and/or appropriate such sums of money as may be necessary for the following accounts. Approximately six hundred dollars from W E M A account and raise and appropriate fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars through taxation.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
I'd like to dispense with the balance of the reading of those line items.
All right.
Second?
Without objection, we'll dispense with the reading of the line items. So, in Article thirty-seven A, we have, we're voting on a figure of thirty- fifty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars, and-
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept Article thirty-seven A. Questions or comments? Those in favor of Article thirty-seven A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-seven A passes. Thirty-seven B, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to enter into negotiations with the Bathwater District for the installation of up to nine fire hydrants on Route one twenty-seven and the Niquocet Road. Note, Bathwater District will install hydrants at no cost, but the number of hydrants will determine the future annual cost. Annual costs are currently one thousand six hundred and seventy dollar- seven dollars per hydrant with Bathwater District, which would total fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars per year. That's for nine hundreds?
That's correct. Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Article thirty-seven B has been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? CR?
Just curious as to, at this point, why we need nine more hydrants, and there must be basis. Just help me understand the basis, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, this summer, we're not only going to have the construction on Route one, but the Bathwater District got eight million dollars in upper funds to run a new water line down the middle road, which they're going to start presently. So, we're going to have that road tied up as well. And what they explained to us is, we figured- we looked at the possibility of putting nine hydrants on the road. It's better to put that number in now, even if we don't use nine. If we, if we ask for nine now, and we only get in six, or five, or four, or whatever we try to feed and our board felt that we need, it doesn't cost anything to eliminate one. But if we, if we decide down the road, if we only ask for six, and then we decide we wanted nine, we'd have to pay for the other.
So, it's an opportunity while the new water-
It's an opportunity, and, you know, we're also, this is going to be a great opportunity because this water line is running right past our old dump. There's a lot of land out there that could be developed, but it's really sketchy to put wells in out there. But this would make Bathwater District's water available for that whole road. It's going to, it's going to leave, it already goes a hundred feet past the school here. They're going to go the rest of the way up to the intersection of Niquocet and, and the middle road, and then they're going to go down the middle road and tap on down to the Covenant Pond School.
I think a fund back through your local insurance agency said if you are within five hundred to a thousand feet of one of those new hydrants, your insurance rates for home insurance actually go down with discounts for being closer to a fire. Put that out there.
Any other questions or comments regarding Article thirty-seven B? Yes, sir?
Why nine and not eighteen to twenty? To be accurate. They're one thousand six hundred and seven dollars a year after they put in. If we put in twenty, we didn't pay that for everyone.
Anything else? All those in favor of Article thirty-seven B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-seven B passes. Thirty-eight, thirty-eight A, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars for the fire department account. The breakdown of the account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to, with the dispensing, the reading of the balance of those line items. Second?
Any objection? Seeing none, we'll now entertain a motion regarding Article thirty-eight A.
Move the article as presented.
My second motion?
Article thirty-eight A has been moved and seconded for a total expenditure of one hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Have you got a question?
Pardon?
I've got a question.
Yes.
On the-
Would you go to the microphone, please?
Yeah. Quick tip trip again. The cost of fuel for the fire truck, you're only raising it a thousand dollars. It should be raised five thousand dollars, it should be ten thousand dollars. But diesel right now is over five fifty a gallon. And I don't, and I don't know when you figured this budget line number for five thousand, but I bet it was way before it was, it's gone up like it has now.
If your intention is that we amend that, we can't do it, because it would raise the figure, and the article reads raise and appropriate, and we're limited to the figures there or anything lower, but not higher.
That, that was the number that the, the fire department gave us, and they, they had, they had money left in that account this year. And they thought, maybe after a thousand dollars, they'd be all right. The other thing is, even though we've given you a list of where the money might go, they can, as long as it's used for fire department purpose, let's say like they, they had money left over in one of these accounts, let's say like training expenses, they didn't spend the three thousand. They can move that to the fuel account, as long as they stay within the bottom line, which is one hundred forty-nine thousand four hundred and thirty. So, we, we felt confident that we could get this. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-eight A, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Thirty-eight A passes. Thirty-eight B, to see if the town will vote to, one, raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars for interest payments for the fifth year of the fire truck, and two, to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand eight hundred for principal payments for the fifth year of the fire truck.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second motion?
Thirty-eight B has been moved, thirty-eight B has been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of thirty-eight B, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-eight B passes. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will allow the select board to appoint fire chiefs for up to three-year terms.
Move the article to be accepted and read.
Second?
Article thirty-nine has been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article thirty-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article thirty-nine A, thirty-nine passes. Article forty-eight, forty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for the emergency medical services department. The breakdown of the account is as follows.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Longland.
I'd like to make a motion. Make a dispens of the reading of each of those line items. Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on the Article 48 with a figure of $289,788.
First, we can move that.
Yeah.
First, move, move the article and read. I'll second the motion.
The article has been moved and seconded. Comments or questions?
I have a comment, and I just wanted to point out that the greatest, the reasons for the increase here, if you look at payroll, it's gone from $130 to $183.
We're really glad to have you.
Excuse me, if you could stand to the microphone?
I'll be here. Can we just get an explanation? We hired someone new to just pay increases? Be someone in the...
Glad to answer that question, neighbor. My name is Brian Crowell, I'm the U.S. Director, so blame that all on me. We have a volunteer crew, so there's, they're not full-time employees, they get paid a stipend to be available, and they also get paid hourly to respond to calls. I have to compete with Wisconsin and Walthamboro and CLC Ambulance, who just went three to six dollar an hour increases. So with the increases that we're asking for, is to incentivize someone to take a shift in Woolwich at a lower rate than they could get if they were to go to another agency hourly. So we're trying to get, trying to remain competitive so that we can continue to cover the point of coverage that we provide to the town.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir?
Just a quick question, is there an increase in fees related to this? Because it seems like there should be, that someplace else...
They're, they're in there. I just, I also want to know, because it's, the dollar amount's not noted in warrants, and we're not on that article yet, so speaking slightly out of turn. We do, we budget or we estimate that we bring in $70,000 of revenue every year. Last year, we brought in just over, just over $100,000 in revenue. It was $100,000 and change, so we estimated seventy on that for last year. This year, we estimated seventy thousand as well. We're working with a new building company, and we just logged in twenty minutes ago and checked. So far this year, with two months remaining in the fiscal year, we've brought in over $65,000 to offset those amounts. So that is the full amount, but there is an offset involved there as well.
And where do we see the offset in the report?
It is, so it falls under Section C of this article, which is to use any amount of income generated by rescue services to reduce the budget as they deem appropriate.
And the funds you get are from the users or their insurance?
Correct, from insurance bill increases.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm just not sure if I can answer your question, answer sort of, the social security and Medicare and other costs are already in the warrant here for a budget for the increase.
Anything else on this article? So what's before us is Article 48, sum of $289,788. All those in favor of the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 48, 48 passes. 40b, to see if the town will vote, one, to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,880 for interest payments for the fourth year for the ambulance, and two, to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,429 for principal payments for the fourth year for the ambulance.
Move the article, be accepted and read. Second?
Article 40b has been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? All those in favor of Article 40b, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Article 40b passes. 40c, to see if the town will authorize the select board to use any amount of income generated by rescue services to reduce the budget as they deem appropriate.
Move the article, be accepted and read. Second motion?
Article 40c has been moved and seconded. Discussions or questions? All those in favor of Article 40c, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 40c passes. 40d, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate funds from the American Rescue Plan Act to purchase an automatic CPR machine, also known as a lupus device, in an amount not to exceed $19,000.
Move the article, be accepted and read. Second?
Article 40d has been moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Yes, sir?
Didn't we approve that last year?
We did, so last year, this year, this is the second one.
So there'll be two of them?
Is that with the ambulances, yeah?
Oh, okay. Didn't know that.
Right, Brian?
Currently, both the ambulances are not identically equipped, because Rescue Two, which is parked out front, does not have a lupus on it, so this will make both trucks identical, and the board has also approved previously a video laryngoscope set for the ambulance, which is being delayed in purchasing. That is to match a donation from the Sunrise Rotary, which purchased one for us back in November, December, I believe, so both trucks can be identical, and I'm going to look through a couple people, I believe will be the only service in the general area that has all of our ambulances equipped with both of those pieces of equipment, which is pretty awesome to be able to say.
Anything else? Those in favor of Article 40d, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 40d passes. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $400 from the snowmobile registration reimbursement for the Croset Trail Breakers snowmobile club.
Move the article, be accepted and read. Second?
Article 41 has been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Yes? Yes, what is it, use the board?
I can answer that.
Your sir, Nate, sir?
Yes, I'm Gary Wright, I'm the president of the snowmobile club, the Croset Trail Breaker. This is money that is coming from the registrations, that people come in to guide these registrations every year, and the money from that, of course, is over $400, so we receive from this the $400 to help us survive and support our club to continue. So that's essentially what it is. Thank you.
And what is the money spent on?
It's spent on insurance and CMP, fuel, whatever we have to have as expenditures through the year. Any other questions?
Does that answer you? Anything else? Those in favor of Article 41, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 41 passes. Article 42, to see what sum of money the town will vote to donate to the following local agencies.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Would you like to make a motion in the dispens of the reading of the balance of those line items? Second.
Is there any objection to dispense the reading? Seeing, is there a motion to accept Article 42, which makes donations of $20,142?
So move. Second.
Article 42 has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Question?
Yes?
I don't see the patent-free library anywhere in this warrant. Are we supporting them or not? Which article was it?
Nineteen.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes? Excuse me, people can't hear you, if you could...
Hold it close, hold it, hold it close.
I just want to make an observation that in most of the other accounts, there's been an increase in what has been awarded for different expenses and such, and that's just kind of the way the world is, and in this account, that's helping to support people who are not having, having the resources that they need, there is no increase, and so, you know, certainly we want to give what we are, but I guess I'm just wondering, how do people have input about this account, and whether there should be some increases from time to time?
One question might be, how are these figures arrived at? Is this what the agency has asked for, or has somebody else set the figure?
Most of the time, it's, it's what the agency has asked for. We did, a few years back, we capped the amount of money that we were going to spend on donations, if, if, once in a while, we do raise it, if somebody can come in and show us that they are spending more in our town than we are giving them, but we, we try to be good students and we tax it all, and we try not to create as money specifically to give away.
Yes?
So just a question.
Hold, hold the microphone.
So how does a citizen, make this decision yet made, and how do the citizens have some input on that?
You could certainly come in and give us your comments on any one of these, and I'll also point out that there's nothing here that bars any citizen from donating to any one of these charities on their own, if they think that the town should do that.
Yes?
And how are these bedded? How are these agencies bedded?
So, so many of them...
Hold on, the question is, how are these agencies bedded?
Okay, so many of them, as you folks have known, we've been supporting for years. The select board adopted a few years ago a policy on these, where they, they have to do a presentation, and they have to put a petition together and some support to the board, and the reason we did that is, we just, we didn't know how we would control these donations, you know, how do we go from zero to a thousand agencies requesting money? So to answer the other, the other woman's question a little better, we do budget all winter, so starting after the first of the year, right out through March, we're budgeting. So if somebody wants to come to a select board meeting, or, or, all of our budget meetings are public, they make a case for something, we're always there to listen to them. We just see these, these are, these are very valuable, they provide good services, but they are donations, and so we choose to, to approve them.
Yes, sir?
I'm going to go on tonight, and just curious, what, what they do, parents have boats that have to pay $5,000, those can be, yeah, take to Woolwich. That's a great program, actually. What they do is they take the eighth grade students from, from the school here, they, they have to write an essay to say why they want to participate in building a boat, and they get down to the Maine Maritime, and they, they build two boats, and then they raffle them off and get the money back from the boat. It's great to get down there and watch these kids, they're not allowed to use their cellphone, they're not allowed to use a calculator, they're actually using a tape measure, they're doing math with a pencil and a piece of paper, they, most of them will never grow up to be boatlifters, but they'll know how to repair a fence, hang a door in their house, or whatever, and it's just, it's, it, if you ever get a chance, you can go down there and watch the kids work and everything, and it's, it's a great program.
So you're saying this $5,000 goes to that magnificent new building at the Maine Maritime Academy to have kids learn how to build boats?
No, it, it's not, that they can train Maine Maritime, Maine Maritime. It offsets the cost of, of the materials and everything for these kids to build the boat.
Oh, so they build them here in Woolwich somewhere?
They build them at the Maine Maritime Academy. Maine Maritime, I'm sorry, they, I'm sorry, and it, and they bust the kids from here over to Washington Street in Bath, and they build the boats down there.
Any other questions or comments? Article 42, sum of $20,142 for donations. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Article 42 passes. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,142 for donations to local agencies and organizations.
The article is read. Second?
Article 43 has been moved and seconded. So this is really just a continuation of Article 42, is that right?
That's correct.
It funds it.
Right, in, in 42, we order the meal, and in 43, the waitress pulls up her chair.
Questions or comments? All those in favor of Article 43, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article 43 passes. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to raise the current renewal fee for all marijuana license applications from $250 to $500, and also raise the fee for background check fees from $30 to $50.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Dispense of the reading of the balance of those items listed in the, the rest of that.
Thank you.
Move the article, I'll second the motion and move the article.
Is there any objections?
And I'll second the motion.
Just for sake of clarity, we've got two columns, and the left-hand column is the initial license application, and the right-hand column is the renewal license application. And so we have changes in some of the figures, but not in others, and where changes are, there's a cross through the old, the current figure, and then replaced with what is proposed as a new figure. Questions or comments? CR?
On adult-use marijuana cultivation facility, the $250 should be crossed out, the new renewal is quite hard to assume. I don't mind. On that, on that, in the, in here, I'm...
In the book, yeah.
In the book.
We, we have two places that the warrant is published. One is the handout, and the other is in the town report, and CR Davis is looking at the town report, and you may be also, and then the right-hand column, about a little bit more than halfway down, is a figure of $250, and right under that is $500. And those are for the adult-use marijuana cultivation facilities. The figure of $250 should align with, and then that would be replaced, if we approve this article, with a $500 figure. So there are only certain places where there are changes, and, and that's one of them. The others, the lines are properly through the old numbers. Thanks, CR. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? No? All those in favor of Article forty-four changing those figures that are noted? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Article forty-four passes. We're at the end here. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise the current transportation rates for mileage cost from fourteen dollars to sixteen dollars due to an increase in fuel costs.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Dispense of the reading of the balance of those line items. So if you're out of directions, you can move.
All right.
Second. Now, let's move the article.
I second the motion.
So we have before us now this Article forty-five, and there's really only one change, and that's the mileage-dollar figure. Cross out fourteen, replace it with sixteen. All the other numbers stay the same. And this is for the EMS service, not for anything else. Questions or comments?
What's ALS and DLS?
The question is, what is ALS, non-emergency, and ALS, emergency? You're just going to get an answer to the question, and we'll have a final.
So those are defined in the full ordinance, in the full language of the billing ordinance. Those are set by Medicare, their definitions. Oh, ALS is advanced life support. DLS is basic life support. And those are defined by Medicare, by the levels of service provided. The mileage rate, there's a maximum mileage rate, which we are well below, that we can provide, is set based on location of the community and a few other factors. So that is, that's less than the maximum that we can go. There's a minimum and a maximum. So as long as we stay within that range, Medicare's okay with that. Medicare sets the rates that we all have to follow for basic, for all of our insurances.
Mr. Pearlton, so if you go five miles with a new rate of sixteen dollars, that would be eighty dollars?
Correct. Ten dollars increase. And that, just to clarify, mileage is a loaded mileage. So that is not responding to your house. That is responding from picking you up to the hospital. And our fulsome numbers of our average since July first is sixteen miles per car on average. And if you want, since I have it, our reimbursement rate right now is forty-four percent. So if we bill out eight hundred and fifteen dollars, that's our average bill out. We bring in three hundred and sixty-five dollars, so that eight hundred and fifteen is our reimbursement for what we actually bill out, which is forty-four percent right now.
And your reimbursed dollars go into the...
It offsets our budget, correct.
What?
It offsets our budget.
So it goes to the town and offsets your budget?
Correct.
Can I just ask one other question related to that?
Yes, you can step to the microphone.
To what extent will the increase offset, the increase in the rate offset the increase that was anticipated in the budget?
Mileage is not... When it comes to medical reimbursement, we do see a higher percentage of return on mileage than we do on the procedures. And that's, insurance is fighting over how much they're going to reimburse us on. As you saw, or you may have seen, the legislature has been talking a lot about increasing main care and Medicare reimbursement rates because they are significantly lower than where they really should be. We do see a higher return on mileage than we do on the procedures. So the procedures would be the ALS and DLS goes. Insurances don't fight us as much on mileage. Back fifteen years ago, almost twenty years ago, when I started in emergency services, it wasn't flat rates like this. It was like we were going to a buffet, and if we put oxygen on you, you'd get charged this much. If we gave you medication, it was this. If we checked your blood pressure, it was this. And so, some years ago, we went to a flat rate. And that's insurance, medical billing, we all see it in hospitals. It's the same with ADN, because it's not where it needs to be to reimburse us as a rural service. As you see, we're not being made whole. But it's just helping us a little bit. And the only reason for the increase in mileage is to help us out with the job. We can't predict those, so that's the rule of that.
Who goes to that for you when you're reimbursed?
So we now use a billing company. Because our old billing company closed, they were in Winterport, so they were in Maine. Unfortunately, they closed. No other service in Maine would take us on, so we were referred to a company in Kentucky. So if we have, and you have a regional office in Boston. So if we have any significantly lower rate, we can ask them to appeal that. And they've done that close in the past, and we've shown a success with that.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Article forty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Article forty-five passes. Mr. Mead, go here. Oh, Mr. Mead, we need you.
At no cost to the town, I declare this meeting closed.
All those in favor? And opposed?